Agenda for this evening, we have one item on our discussion agenda, which is a public hearing in relation to White Plains, the White Plains Comprehensive Plan. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing is open. We're going to start out with Commissioner Gomez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Common Council. In light of the large crowd we have tonight, I'm going to take a few moments to sort of, again, open this hearing this evening with some information, hopefully allay some fears. I think there's a lot of quote unquote misinformation out in the community as it relates to certain things within the plan and specific projects proposed outside the scope of this plan itself. So I'll get into that in due course. So here we are, second meeting. I'm going to start with this because I know I've been doing this for three years now, but I want to make sure everybody's crystal clear on what the actual plan is and what the draft that's before the Common Council indeed is. So here it is. It's an official long-range planning policy document. So it's not zoning. It's not a change in zoning. There's sort of policies that relates to different areas of the city, not just with land use per se, but infrastructure, demographics, all sorts of information on future city services, et cetera. I did promise, I always say about three years ago at this lectern, that this document would be aspirational, educational, concise, and dynamic. And I'm pleased to say that we've gotten great feedback that it is indeed becoming of a city such as White Plains, and people are using it. Why are we doing this? I've hit this slide again on the road for three years. It's all about codifying a community vision, recognizing that over the thousands and thousands of comments we've gotten through the three years, lots of people have lots of different ideas. So it's up to the mayor here and the Common Council to adopt this draft at some point. It's not set in stone. It's obviously a draft. That's why we have public hearings. This notion of shaping versus protecting the future, and what does a community want to be? What do we want to be in White Plains in 15, 20, 30 years? So it's kind of setting the guide rails, as it were, but it's not, in fact, changing local laws as it relates to zoning. Importantly, I've said from the beginning that we've got to acknowledge that change is inevitable, and we cannot be planning in a vacuum. That is to say that we have our neighbors, we're 10 square miles, we're mighty, but we do have our neighbors, Greenberg, Scarsdale, North Castle, Harrison, as well as Greater Westchester County and the 450 square miles that makes up Westchester. So we do think of regional planning trends. And then this last bullet, of course, I've said it ad nauseam, because I recognize I've been a local planner in Westchester County for about 20 years now, different communities, different scales, Westchester County as well. So I know this county probably as well as anybody as it relates to local land use planning. And I will say, looking at the history of a lot of these documents dating back to the 19 teens and twenties in Westchester, they've really shaped what we see today from land use pattern perspective. So whether it's density, whether they're single-family zoning, clearly two-family, multifamily, where jobs are, and where opportunities are. So we take this very seriously, and I know the council and the mayor does as well, that this is an important document that sets the course of future actions by the council. So this Samuel Clemens, better known as Mark Twain, there's a great quote that always reminds me of, the many that he had, reminds me a lot of what happens when I've been through these local land use planning processes, and it's that, that I'm in favor of progress, it's change I don't like. So having been through this process many, many times, I'm going to allay a lot of fears today, and that's my hope. I know a lot of folks in this room. I've met with a lot of neighborhood associations, and I want to clarify the record, so to speak, as to what is actually in the draft, and frankly, maybe some of the wording and some of his initiatives that could be worded better, right? So it's not to make people scared of change, or in many cases, the progress that we want. So here we are. You see he's going to cute little lapel pin of the One White Plains, Mr. Clemens. But these are our six initiatives. We'll get into Connect, Green, Live, Play, Strengthen, and Work, and those are the six elements of the plan itself. So what's in the name, of course, 28 neighborhood associations. I've said it again, ad nauseam. It's the strength of the city. But from the very beginning, the plan here was to think holistically and think synergistically as it relates to sort of the challenges and opportunities we have across the 10 square miles of the city. So I always reference e pluribus unum, "out of many, one", the great seal of this country. I couldn't help it, as we're thinking of great thinkers. This is the great ad, the Apple ad. I do not have, was it patent pending? I do not have the ability to show this, but this was from 1997, and the thought was, from the very beginning, how do we, in this process, having been involved in land use planning, again, for the better part of two decades almost, in the county, how do we think differently? How do we not just think traditionally as it relates to comprehensive planning? How do we think outside the box? How do we look at aspirational thinking for the next 10, 20, 30 years and pass this city down to our children and grandchildren even better than the wonderful city it is today? So this is the vision statement. I'm not going to read it. I've read it 100 times. I can probably do it in my sleep. But this is the statement after thousands of comments two and a half years ago, we established. It is the lens through which everything in this plan was drafted, and it really is all encompassing when you speak about what the city of White Plains in the future, what the vision for One White Plains would be. So obviously talking about housing, culture, businesses, all the wonderful things that make the city great. It's been more than 30 months. We started way back in 2021. It's probably closer to 36 months now, and you can see the wonderful pictures. I won't get into all the outreach, but there was many big public opportunities, lots of listening tours, lots of opportunities for public comment in addition to this evening, and of course, what the Conference of Plan Committee worked on for the better part of a year. This is just a Gantt chart representing a lot of that. So way back in 2021, that community engagement piece was so key from the get-go. You know, we just wanted to listen. There was no preconceived ideas or notions, and we had that vision survey online. We did a lot of online mapping. And then into 2022, we had some significant public workshops, stakeholder focus groups. And then we got into 2023, where we got a lot of the draft content out into the community, and people were able to review that both online and in person. So we did have a robust involvement throughout the process, and clearly we continue to have, which is wonderful. I mean, that's really what this is about. It's the city's plan, it's the community's plan. The bottom column, or row, I should say, represents the meetings of the Conference of Plan Committee, the 15-member-appointed committee by the mayor and the council to really steer and implement the draft and get it to the council. So I want to just acknowledge their hard work, you know, all people from around the city representing all neighborhoods. So this is the plan format, online. There's an introduction, the six main elements, each with an introduction. There's topics and objectives that we hit on, you know, kind of prescient planning sort of policy. We get into existing conditions, and then we have the 147 initiatives split amongst the six core elements, as you see right there. And then there's an Implement section, which talks about how is this roadmap going to be implemented moving forward. Lot of good background data if people are interested, retail studies, demographics, et cetera. So that's the nutshell, the kind of quick elevator pitch about the plan, somewhat quick. These are the clarifications I want to hit today because I know there's, you know, a lot of folks that want to speak, obviously. And there's four key clarifications. One, as I said from the get-go, the plan itself includes general policy recommendations. They are not, in fact, zoning amendments or changes. Any future zoning change would require two things, really. One is obviously support from this body, the council, but public hearings in terms of hearing from the public, and then environmental review. So that's as significant as Council President Pressett has mentioned, our environmental officer, review any and all proposals for any future zoning. It has been formulated from thousands of public comments over three years. I do want to hit this point. Nothing in here is specific to a particular development. So I know, you know, there's folks today, I understand that Taborzi, the former Taborzi property near Rosedale, people are concerned about the Windward School. I share those concerns. I think this council shares those concerns. So to the extent that there's language and a general nature here that might speak in generalities about certain areas of the city, in no way does that represent sort of a de facto policy that would lead to a future rezoning. So that's incredibly important. I'll point you to Live White Plains 11, which references the Galleria Mall, you know, one of the biggest development sites in the future of Westchester County, or in the history, I should say. And in no case, if you look at Live White Plains 11, is it that specific to what's being proposed. It's very much kind of general policy, what the city and what the Conference of Plan Committee, you know, gave all to us, the council, as sort of a recommended guidepost. There's no agenda of preconceived notions. I can't say that strongly enough. What I can tell you is that over the better part of 30 months, or 36 months, these are the two issues I heard, Judy Mezzi, Deputy Commissioner, all the Planning Department staff, consultants, Conference of Plan Committee members, we kept hearing about the affordable housing crisis, not just in the city, but in the region, in the nation, frankly, and senior housing options. So how can my kids afford to live in this city in the future? And how can I, if I'm aging and I'm in my senior years, afford to stay in this wonderful city? Those are the two biggest comments we got unequivocally throughout this process. And the process is not over. So here we are tonight. The draft is not set in stone. We had that public hearing before the Conference of Plan Committee, and of course, we're here at the council level. So those are the four key clarifications. The obverse side, I want to just hit this because this is important. I read everything, of course. I care about what everybody says and whatever we comment in the city, or frankly, if you're not even living in the city, what you think about this plan. Several misperceptions and fears I want to get out front. I mean, the type of language that I'm seeing here about this being kind of a de facto way to shove in a particular application for multifamily housing, for example, completely false. Nothing to do with anything in Rosedale, Lombardos, Windward School, et cetera. Clear, clear, clear. The plan is set forth by Hokel. It applies all over New York State. I think people are misconstruing what the governor's plan was to add additional dwelling units near transit stations a couple of years ago. That is not part of this plan, nor is it necessarily from the state coming down to the local level. I mean, I won't even comment about that one, but I've seen a lot of stuff that's been forwarded to me about, this is about housing, people, we're a sanctuary city, et cetera. It's not in the plan. That's not what's in any of these initiatives, I assure you. And then you'll turn White Plains into an overcrowded urban dump, which clearly, I don't want to comment on that one either. So context is key. I can't say that enough because fear begats fear. Context of how we got to this point and how we plan for these six elements. This isn't just people writing crazy initiatives and ideas, right? This is a lot of baseline data, a lot of expertise, and a lot of public comment. So I'm going to get into the Live White Plains elements that I know have caused a lot of agita in the most recent months, or weeks, I should say, and I'm going to hopefully allay some fears, and then we'll let the folks speak. So this is sort of the, this is the crux of all, housing affordability. So, you know, I won't get into too much detail, but whether you're a homeowner in White Plains or a renter, which I might add is about 50/50 in terms of what we call housing tenure between renters and owners. In 2020, so roughly 34% of homeowners were cost burdened. Cost burden means you spend 30% or more of their income on housing costs, right? Severely cost burden means you spend 50% or more. So that's a huge number, right? Out of those 34%, 11% of homeowners in the city were severely cost burdened, spending more than half their income on housing costs. It's even worse for renters, right? 45% of renter households. So again, this is what we heard ad nauseam for three years, is the affordable housing crisis, and how do we make the city available for not just folks here, but in the future, folks to continue to raise their families. So we came up with four strategies that are in the plan. One is creating a balance between all these kind of quote unquote more high-end luxury buildings being developed, and being very cognizant about trying to get more workforce housing in the downtown. So that's kind of looking at new housing typologies that meets kind of a more diverse population. Housing strategy two is about this missing middle housing. It's a crisis everywhere. How do we find opportunities very surgically to look at sort of, you know, townhouses, et cetera, where, you know, frankly, there's not a lot of opportunity in the city, or anywhere in the region, frankly. Housing strategy three, which is really leveraging the TOD, Transit or Inte Development Opportunities, we have in the city. I think we've done that very well around both the North White Plains and the White Plains train station. And then housing strategy four, we've seen it most recently with the approval of the Elizabeth Seaton new project, but it's exploring options and expanding options for supportive housing and critically seniors. So these are the four strategies that, again, have kind of informed the Live White Plains housing initiatives. So the initiatives themselves. Live White Plains one talks about conducting a feasibility study. So again, it's not a zoning change. It's simply an analysis to identify reasonable standards for potentially implementing ADUs or accessory dwelling units in the city. So a lot of this is talked about affordable housing options, opportunities for income for housing owners, and more flexible living arrangements for seniors and families. What I will say is that this isn't new, and frankly, it's not even that progressive. We've mapped how many there are. There's 18 municipalities in Westchester County that have them. There's 18 ordinances. That's how many housing units represent those 18 communities. And essentially, there's only 1,800 units countywide, and that represents, on average, about 1% of total housing stock. So these aren't sort of a, you know, prevalent, it's one tool in the toolbox, as it were, potentially for the city to consider, but in no ways at a panacea, and in no ways is it creating sort of a multifamily environment in any of these communities. I'll also point out, you know, I know the north part of the county very well. I mean, a lot of these communities also have very high property values, and I've talked to a lot of the planning directors and public as well, and they've seemed to be, again, a way to marginally increase in a very small way, opportunities for people to live in the city. So again, most of the communities, it's less than 3% of the housing units. It averages out to 1%. So again, these laws have been implemented, and they're incredibly stringent. And again, this was something we thought, as it relates to getting to some of those housing strategies, might be an opportunity for the city to consider. So this is exactly out of the plan itself. It's more than just the headline. We got into considering different ways of if the city were to consider this, how would you do it? By special permit? It would have to be owner occupied. It would have to be on larger lots only. There's all sorts of waste committees are doing this, minimum habitable area, maximum habitable area, and then all sorts of other strong requirements, whether it's a special permit or approval. So again, this was what we heard was an opportunity to perhaps nibble at the edges. Live White Plains six, study the feasibility of permitting senior housing, again, that housing policy about senior housing, such as assisted living facilities in single and multifamily districts where appropriate. And I think what's here key, again, this is a study. This is not saying we're going to rezone anywhere. This is saying we're going to look at the analysis of are there surgical opportunities and where appropriate? So this is an analysis we do in the Planning Department all the time. This is looking at different uses, where they're permitted, kind of looking at updating the existing zoning code where needed. What you're seeing here, I guess my legend's hard to read on the computer, but essentially, we have a lot of areas in the city where assisted living and/or assisted living or senior housing is not permitted. So these areas you see in a hatch in the center is where you can do both, and then some of these other areas are where you can do one of the other. What's really key is when you see me go to the zoning map here, you'll see that there's certain zoning districts, certain multifamily districts that do not allow certain assisted living. So that was really the crux of White Plains six. It was allowing these in multifamily districts. Single family here, I want to be very clear, and we can be better, we can change this, right, is really referencing some of these larger campuses where we think there might be opportunity in the future, for example, if New York Hospital or even Burke were to have some sort of level of senior housing on a large campus. So in no way was this intended to say that single-family districts and neighborhoods would have senior housing or assisted living facilities. So we can clarify that. But you can see from the zoning map that there's a lot of areas here, for example, that would not permit that sort of level of senior housing. I will also add that we did update the zoning code recently to actually change what is in this area, the Seaton Development. We used to have a planned senior residential development district. It got remapped to this planned hospital campus development district. I know it's a mouthful, but we do have on the books current zoning that would allow for additional senior housing, and those are the sorts of things we're thinking of on perhaps some of these larger institutional uses over time. So I want to be clear about that. Live White Plains 12, facilitate the continued growth and long-term success of the White Plains Hospital, New York Presbyterian, Burke, and other institutions with large campuses. Frankly, it's the same rationale as Live White Plains six. I'm just cherry picking the last paragraph of what is in this initiative, and there's a few things that I think are key. Evaluate and potentially revise the underlying zoning regulations. We're doing this all the time in the Planning Department, right? Regardless of a comprehensive planning process, we're looking at opportunities to either restrict development or find opportunities to surgically, you know, get the sort of expansion opportunities that these institutions might need. We reference the Windward School only in the context of perhaps an adaptive reuse. So whether or not, you know, you were to adaptively reuse a current, former, current, former, old Windward School, that might be something that's not permitted under zoning. Is that something that could be less intrusive to the neighborhood than perhaps a subdivision, you know? So there's ways of thinking progressively about the most sustainable development, which is an existing reuse of a building. Perhaps there's uses we haven't considered for that site. That's what's intended to Live White Plains 12. Thirteen, amend subdivision regulations to permit appropriate clustering techniques for large properties in single-family and multifamily zoning districts. This really is a carry-through, and I know I'd spoken, you know, Mike Sanchez and Rosedale, I know was very keen on this one. The existing plan, that's on the books now, the 2006 plan, has language related to the golf courses about encouraging the use of special clustering. Just by word of background, clustering is sort of a general term, and the only clusters we have that are permitted in the city of White Plains are actually conservation developments. I'll hit that in one moment. But all this is, is carrying through that it was very clear in the existing plan that you cannot do a conservation development on golf courses. So the existing plan has this language about how do we look at other ways to cluster and save the environment in a way that is not a conservation development. And so frankly, I've seen it with the Pharrell subdivision, you know, the Planning Board is now taking up the Environmental Impact Statement. That'll probably be before the Planning Board in a few months. But what's important there is we heard from the community during the public scoping session, and there's a lot of folks in the community in Getney that really liked the idea of perhaps changing the existing R-130 designation to get better background setbacks, to get better greenways, to get better screening from Ridgeway. So the idea of special clustering techniques on its face does not increase density. It does not increase height. It allows the city to be more creative and flexible in how development happens on these large sites. So again, nothing really new here. And that's what it is. It's revising for 10 acres or more, very similar to conservation developments. You cannot do, again, a conservation development on the golf courses as it's written in our current plan or in our current zoning. So this would have the city evaluate opportunities there, if the council so chooses.
So ma'am, ma'am, ma'am.
I'll explain it.
Ma'am, please let him finish, and then we'll...
So, no, that's a great point. So I'll say it very, right now, there's only, let me get to the last slide. I'll explain it. This one right here, it's a better. Live 14, evaluate amending current zoning regulations for conservation developments to permit attached housing units on parcels greater than five acres. So this is where I'm going to get into what the city does permit now. The only type of clustering that you can do anywhere in the city is called a conservation subdivision. It's been on the books since 1980. So this is very important. This is not a new regulation. You've been able to do this since 1980, and we have eight of them in the city, which I'll get into in a moment. They all contain single-family homes, so they're not multifamily. You basically determine how many homes you could do on a large development site in what we call a conventional subdivision, meaning calculate how many lots you could get, fit the roads in, and all a conservation subdivision allows you to do is cluster those homes a little closer together to protect the environmental features on site. And that was really the intent in 1980. That hasn't changed. Again, as I said, there's no increase in density. It's not like you can get more homes than the law would require under your R-130, right? If you need 30,000 square feet of lot area to do a single-family home, this doesn't change that fact. It just allows you to kind of meld the kind of setbacks and increase sort of the green space to cluster the homes closer, to protect wetlands, to protect the green space, to protect trees, et cetera. So that's what it's about. Opportunities to have more contiguous open space. The current plan, the 2006 Conference of Plan, has a lot of information about trying to connect a lot of these green spaces in the south end of the city, both for public recreation and/or private recreation, as these conservation subdivisions are. They're private property, but they're green space for the benefit of the residents. They do command very high sale prices. Normally, we don't talk about this sort of thing in Conference of Plans, about property values, et cetera, but we did an analysis that surely they're very desirable places to live because frankly, they've, you know, maximize the amount of green space and available resource for the residents in a way that a conventional subdivision does not. And importantly, it adds to the city's housing options and choices, right? So people can have an opportunity to have perhaps a smaller footprint, but still live in, you know, the south end of the city where maybe they raised their family. They can downsize. These myths are just the obverse. I'm not going to go into them, but they're not multifamily. They don't bring down values. They're frankly, they're very expensive. They average over $1 million a unit of the eight we have. They do not permit more density and height, and in no way have we heard historically since 1980s any of these quote unquote damaging the residential neighborhood. So the existing regulations, as they're on the books now, this is zoning. This isn't the Conference of Plan. This is what you could do in the city now. We have eight properties that we identify as being five acres, and those are in yellow. And then we have another eight properties in that salmon color that are 10 acres or greater. And so the way the law works now, if you have the five acres, so if you're yellow, or if you're more than five acres, you have 10 acres, any of these properties up there, you have an opportunity to a conservation development. If you have between five and 10 acres, all the units in that development must be detached housing. You cannot attach the units themselves. Again, single-family, the difference between being attached or detached. If you happen to have 10 acres on a large property, you have the option to both either attach or not those units, and it's permitted in all these zoning districts. So it is permitted in the R-130, which is our least dense development district. That means that you need 30,000 square feet of lot area, and by way of background, that represents mostly like the Soundview area and pretty much like the golf courses and some other small pockets of the city. So you are able to do this currently. There's no change to regulations. The legislative intent, as I noted way back in 1980, was about encouraging flexibility and preserving the natural environment, et cetera. And then these are the eight we have currently. We have eight of them. They're all over the south end of the city, from Wyndham Close to Ridgeway, to the Greens, Glenbrook, Cobblefields, Brook Hills, Getney, and Club Point. What's important here is the analysis shows that these developments have about 50% open space. So in every way, there's sort of a boon from the environmental sustainability analysis of development. And then just to close, because they're complicated, these things, they require in our current law additional setbacks from a conventional typical subdivision. So the benefit of a conservation development for neighbors is that, at the very least, you can see my cursor, you need to have at least 50 feet setback from your side neighbor or from any streets or roads as part of the development. And that's the minimum. If you have a larger property, you need 60 feet, and if you have a really large property, 75 feet. And that's if they're detached. If they're attached, and you choose to do that, if you have 10 acres or more, you're talking 80 to 100-foot setback in every direction from any lot line and/or street. So what does that mean? That means that in every case, if you develop a conservation subdivision, you're having a significant increase in setbacks to your neighbors than you would in a typical conventional typical subdivision in those same districts. And I'll graphically show you. This is an example of one in Glenbrook Road there. 25-foot setbacks in a typical development subdivision, the 50-foot setback that was required when this was approved because of the clustering of the homes. And then even going further here, we have a typical 30-foot setback on a larger property in a conservation development at 100 feet. So none of this is changing. The only thing the plan is recommending in this initiative is the ability now to attach housing on parcels that are between five and 10 acres. And the idea was there was more environmental benefit to do so on the smaller properties, right? So it's not increasing density, et cetera. So all my big, long-winded example is just showing that that initiative is saying, we should consider as a city reducing that 10-acre threshold to attach homes to five acres. Single-family homes, no more homes. They can be attached for the benefit of saving more of the environment. And then finally, Live White Plains 16, study the potential to permit two-family residences, townhomes, and/or medium-density housing along portions of the North Street Quarter. Again, this one was something that was kind of fraught and back and forth and discussed ad nauseam with the Conference of Plan Committee. It's all about studying potential, mainly because you have a lot of environmental features, but you also have a lot of opportunity on the North Street Quarter where there's a lot of old institutions. So just to close here, everything you see in blue along North Street, as you know, are institutional uses. And so there might be opportunity in the future, recognizing the zoning map on the left here, to look at surgically, are there opportunities in some of these large religious properties in the future, if they're not to be there anymore, to find opportunities for senior housing? So that was the goal, recognizing that senior housing has less of an impact than unrestricted residential. So I know that's a lot, but I wanted to make sure that people can understand the context of where these all came from.
Could you expand to what you said you were going to answer?
Yes.
Screening Ridgeway.
Oh, screening. So if you look at what's proposed currently by the Pharrell Group, parcel A, which is the property along the Ridgway stretch, has in their preferred alternative, right? They have a study going in front of the Planning Board, or they will, that has that parcel having homes clustered a little closer together in exchange for a much deeper setback from Ridgway. So the north, as you're going eastbound on Ridgway, as you pass that parcel where the current golf club is, if this proposal and subdivision is approved as proposed, you would have a much more significant, at least 50-foot setback from Ridgway before the backyard of the house. So much greener, rather than seeing somebody swimming pool, 10, 20, 30 feet in that situation, a rear yard setback in the R- a rear yard setback in the R-130, you'd have a much more significant green space. So again, the irony in all this is, in meeting with folks in Gedney, some of the people really clearly wanted all the sites to be rezoned. They said the R-130 does not provide enough significant rear yard setback to a lot of our properties. We should have flexibility, which is what the plan talks about. The city never changed and created new conservation development red legislation or clustering techniques outside of the current conservation development to allow that to happen. So what's happening now is that parcel A, if you're with me still, that parcel A, they want to kind of recognize that there might be a need for sort of more seniors, smaller lots, or not smaller in area, deeper lots, smaller areas that are going to need lawn for mowing, ability to walk to a, perhaps, a club.
Sir, 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 sir.
I'll talk about that too, while you have me.
Folks, I know almost 99% of people understand this, but when we're at a... This is a formal proceeding, okay? And we want to make sure everyone is heard. We can't just shout things out. It's not... This isn't comedy.
So, so I'll...
Ma'am, ma'am, no, I'm... Well, the door just opened and someone started shouting in, and I feel I must address it.
Yeah, so I mean, that's the benefit of having flexibility in zoning. Again, I can't say it enough, there's no increase in the number of houses you would get. That's the key. So more green space, more of a veicolic feel, if you will.
About the roads?
Yeah.
Who do we... Who talked about that? The roads that will be cut through to make this develop... I mean, when the Pharrell people talk, they said 12 roads between Hathaway and Ridgeway and...
Okay.
So this is a separate issue. We're here tonight...
Where does that get addressed?
No, but that the planning board has it because it's as of rights, so the council doesn't even get that project. What we're here to talk about tonight is the comprehensive plan, which is done every decade or 15 years. For us, I think it was about 13 years from last full one. Do you have anything to finish with?
Just, I'll hit that, I know, just that the planning board, it's my understanding that the applicant will have a draft environmental impact statement for the next two months or so. If deemed complete by the planning board, there will be public hearings in front of the planning board, so stay tuned. There is a preferred alternative, and there's other options they had to study. So the planning board, as the mayor said, has jurisdiction approval over subdivisions, not the common council. And if you want me to hit the Rosedale thing in 30 seconds, is that... I can just tell two things, if that's okay. One, I mentioned that Taborzi property. My understanding is there's a developer that has purchased several parcels. I know there's a lot of folks here, I'm sure that will talk about it. There is no proposal, there's no formal proposal to the city, and I don't want to speak for the council, that's for the council mayor. I don't anticipate, whether it's this plan or the current plan, permitting sort of multifamily housing in those neighborhoods. That's not what that district has. I don't want to speak for the council, so I want to lay that fear. I also want to say that as it relates to the former Wynward School property, my math, my geographic information systems analysis shows it being approximately over the threshold, perhaps. I think it is over the threshold of five acres, I'm not sure. So the one initiative, to be quite candid, the one initiative in here that may impact future development there would be the ability, perhaps, in a conservation development to attach single-family homes. You can already do a conservation development on that site, you can already cluster homes together. The only difference from the live that I... The initiative I showed you, as it relates to the Wynward, former Wynward School, perhaps, would be the ability to attach those same number of units. So those are the two prescient issues for Rosedale. But I'll let the public, because I know there's a lot of people.
All right, and so, thank you, Commissioner Gomez. This is what we're here to talk about tonight, the comprehensive plan. It is not designed to apply to any particular project or site. It is, it makes recommendations which can be adopted by the council or not adopted by the council in this document, but also even if this document is passed, it doesn't mean that the provisions here will ever be used. There is a talk about a trolley from Battle Hill. There's a lot of things in here that are nice that may never occur. But I just wanted to run quickly through, this, they started with listening tours in August of 2021, did 13 stops everywhere from Slater Center, Ebel, Eversole Rink, White Plains High School, George Washington School, all through the city. Five public workshops that were well-attended. They've done presentations between the Council of Neighborhood Associations and a number of other groups. The comprehensive plan committee itself, so they got a ton of input, over 2,000 people participating. The comprehensive plan committee, this is their document, right? I want to make that point, too. The council and I got this when you got it. This was done by the committee, based on the input they were taking and all of the hard work they did. And as someone said earlier who doesn't like a couple of the provisions, it really is a good... They did, really did do a good job. Doesn't mean we agree with everything. I don't agree with everything, okay? This is going to be different when we get done. But they met 12 times. Every single one of those meetings that they had was recorded on video and put up on the website. This is a very transparent process. All of this has been public, and they did a lot of hard work. Now, all those people spoke, all those people had things to say, over 2,000, and tonight, we're in the final leg of the public comment, which is the traditional, we're going to go to the council and we're going to get up at the podium. So we are in a council chamber. We want to keep this respectful of all the participants. We want to be able to hear each other, make the points that we want to make. If someone says something you don't agree with, just, you know, I do it all the time. I hear people say things I don't agree with, and you just have to let it go. We're not watching television. When I watch television, I yell. When I'm not watching television, I try not to. So I know that you have people who love our city, who care about our city, just as I do, just as this council does. And we're here to hear from you. And nothing is carved in stone, as I said. This is not my document or the council's document. This is the proposed draft of the comprehensive plan presented to us. So we want to hear from you. What I'm asking you is, we watch television, everyone cheers as soon as someone gets done talking. It's almost like a courtesy. We really want to just let someone speak, let the next person speak, let the next person speak. Don't boo, don't cheer, don't chime in from the doorway or, you know, stand up to make a point. I'm still here at the end of the meeting. You can email me, you can come meet with me, we can talk anytime, we can have these conversations. But for tonight, I really want to keep it professional, because we have a lot of people who want to speak, and I'm sure, I don't know who didn't have dinner yet, but you've got a long night ahead of you, but it's going to be shorter if we do that. And I'm going to finish with some advice that I've given often. I'm giving everybody five minutes. You don't have to use it all. If someone says what you said, get up, you can get up and say ditto, and you'll be a hero in the room, I can tell you. The Gettysburg Address was delivered in two and a half minutes, and it was extremely effective. It summarized democracy and the perils of democracy, to democracy, in a very brief time. So I think, I'm not expecting a crowd of Abraham Lincolns, he was gifted, to say the least, but just bear that in mind. So with that, Madam Clerk, we have people signed up. If you spoke at the last public... This is one public hearing, so if you've already spoken, you don't speak tonight. So this is going to be, the people that didn't speak last time are going to speak tonight. And with that, Madam Clerk, please begin.
Joshua Paul.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm Joshua Paul. I live at Two Collier Place in the heart of Rosedale. I've been a White Plains resident and taxpayer for 25 years. And I'm here to speak in connection with Housing Initiative Number One in the comprehensive plan, which suggests that the city conduct a feasibility study to identify reasonable standards for accessory dwelling units on single-family properties. I want to make a few points. First, I have real experience living with ADUs. I live 20 weeks out of the year in the county of Los Angeles with my adult daughter and her family. Los Angeles is replete with accessory dwelling units in the tiniest areas you can imagine, Beverly Hills, Westwood, Pacific Palisades, Pasadena, Glendale, Burbank. And my experience, they're terrific. I mean, there's no feeling of density, and they do, in fact, solve real problems that the comprehensive plans identify and that my family has lived. So number one, they provide alternatives for, because of the possibility of renting an ADU, they allow for young people to purchase a property they might otherwise be unable to do and then rely on rental income to help with the mortgage, okay? And additionally, they allow for extended families to live together. I'm close to 70. My plan, my wife and my plan at some point is to buy, I'd love to do it here, but if not here, we'll do it in Los Angeles, a large property with my daughter and their family, and we will build an ADU for ourselves in the back. They work. I want to make another point, which is, I kind of liken to the book, The Gentle Art of Swedish Death Cleaning. You know, the question of there not being enough affordable housing is not going to go away. In my life, I'm trying to clean up the clutter in my house, get my affairs in order financially and otherwise, so that I don't bestow to my children a mess, all right? And I submit that it's your responsibility as our elected representatives to do the same. The housing crisis is not going away. You need to deal with it. I want to make a third point, and actually, a third and then briefly a fourth point. And ADUs are in the public interest broadly. And I'm, again, I'm not talking about, you know, specifics. I'll tell you why. This is a city. This is the city of White Plains, and we derive our benefit from having a diverse group of people economically, racially, occupation-wise. You know, not everybody can afford $1 million to pay for a house in Rosedale. But I'll tell you, I am glad that the city leaders in New York City in the '70s had the foresight to enact programs like Mitchell Lama, which made it possible for artists to rent at below-market rents. We need to, we, it is in our interest, all right, to have a broad array of people here. We're planning for the future. If you want to have your single, you know, neighborhood, and I have mine, and, you know, there's Edgemont, there's Starsdale. This is a city, all right? And we welcome a broad group of people in the city. One last point, and then I'm done. There has been a lot of noise made by people who care very much about our community, and I'm talking about the neighborhood associations. These are great things, but they do not represent, they are not representative bodies. They don't represent me. I didn't vote for anybody there, so please, I urge you, recognize that they're just interest groups. Thank you for the time.
Mark Lalou.
Good evening, Mayor Roach and members of the common council. The One White Plains Plan is a guide for the city's future direction and policies. The current draft version of this plan does not address any building trades, construction, and/or organized labor policies. It's not mentioned at all, all right? The appendix of Work WP lists construction jobs, these are 2019 numbers, at 1,210 or 2.4% of the workforce. Construction is number 12 on the list of industry sectors for White Plains. There are enough jobs here for the city to have a plan for attracting and retaining these skilled workers. Downtown revitalization is a major goal of the comprehensive plan. Infrastructure improvements needed for downtown revitalization cannot happen without the building trades and their workers. Policies that push for project labor agreements, apprenticeship programs, and community benefit agreements need to be part of the comprehensive plan. White Plains should have workers that are skilled and trained for their jobs, pay, that pay a fair and living wage, and have benefits like health care. Work WP states 91% of White Plains workforce lives elsewhere, a topic that the plan tries to address. Policies that advocate for PLAs, project labor agreements, apprenticeships, and community benefit agreements, CBAs, encourage workers to live and work here, do their jobs safely and productively, and results in projects that improve White Plains. Also, these policies, also, these are policies that Westchester County's Industrial Development Agency, IDA, has adopted. Finally, I want to point out that this room that we're in right now, the lighting was done by members of my union. If you're happy with the work here, please push for PLAs, apprenticeship programs, and CBAs in the comprehensive plan. This is an opportunity, push for good jobs and to give workers skill that they will have throughout their lifetime that will be always in demand. Thank you.
Joseph Klaasner.
My name is Joseph Klaasner. I lived in White Plains for 37 years. I'm on Wynwood Street. I'm addressing one concern, reading the situation, you know, I'm coming here as a concerned citizen to let you know all the stuff that I've gone through over these 37 years. The Wynwood School traffic situation, small block, was handled with the school hiring four people to do traffic direction. For 35 minutes of every day, you couldn't get through the streets. The infrastructure in that area, based on what I saw in this plan, can't really handle a major development that goes over the, what is now zone. Even 14 homes might be too many, you know, with the situation. Knowing that the city has a four-story situation where you can build a four-story, is when I saw multi-dwellings, I saw these locations coming up with putting 60 or 70 homes in that area. The block itself does not handle sewers. At my end of the block, I'm still attached to a septic because of the way it was set up, where I would have had to run 200 feet through solid rock to attach the city sewer line. It was just so expensive, and it was an experimental system where my system, since 1949, has been working and going on the property with no issues. You know, that said, everyone else has hooked up. I was in a situation where my house was destroyed by Sandy. The town helped me tremendously getting my house back up. It took four years to move back in. I've also lived in downtown White Plains because of it, you know, through insurance. It's just not the area for that situation, based on what I saw in this plan, and I just wanted you to consider this, that even though there's a plan, and I heard St. Gomez say it's not in stone, that's where my concerns were, that it's opening up, that a developer can come in. If the city wants to do something in the area, I think they should do the infrastructure that is needed to accept whatever the plan states is there to be addressed upfront before anything starts. Thank you for my time, for my time, your time, listening to this.
Ron Rhodes.
My name is Ron Rhodes, and with my wife Marie, we have lived at 22 Robin Hood Road in the Gedney Farm section of White Plains for 45 years. Gedney Farms section of White Plains for 45 years. I don't have a fancy PowerPoint presentation for you because I'm too old to identify it, but I, the 45 years of White Plains, I, I look at White Plains as two separate communities. You have a residential community, you have a downtown community. The residential community over my time has been fairly strong and successful. The downtown area has less success, and it's been spotty and less permanent. So when I listened to the PowerPoint presentation, most of the comments were really about tinkering around with the residential area, and it makes me a little nervous, because if it's not broken, let's not fix it. Let me give you some comments. Years ago, when we worked on the comprehensive plan changes and revisions, it was strictly residents from all neighborhoods working together with other residents on numerous committees, without city staff and outside consultants inserting their own agendas and wish lists into the process, as it appears to have happened now. Our prior comprehensive plan experience was of a ground-up process of building a realistic and workable comprehensive plan for all citizens, rather than the city staff's current top-down approach that leaves out a significant number of residents from inclusion and the participation process. And now the city staff bureaucrats are trying to accelerate the approval process before many of the residents are even aware of the threatening details and agendas being opposed. We offer a couple of suggestions. One, do review the proposed comprehensive plan with each of the numerous residential neighborhood associations and incorporate their ideas and suggestions. Two, do include in the updated comprehensive plan the requirement that all large developments in residential areas, that the impacted neighborhood association must be included from day one in all the discussions and plans. We include this because no one knows the character of their own neighborhood better than the people who reside there day in and day out. And keep in mind that the main reason the prior FASNY development failed was because the city staff excluded local Gedney residents from all the detailed plans and discussions. Number three, don't make any zoning changes for the residential areas unless it is requested by a specific neighborhood association for their own area. We believe residential zoning protects the value of individual properties, and if the city weakens zoning, it will result in lower property valuations and tax revenues for the city, county, and school district recipients, as well as harm individual homeowners who have spent years building valuable equity. In our opinion, the big picture at play here is that all residents are really in a fight for control of the future of the city. The common theme in the proposed comprehensive plan changes, also in the failed FASNY fiasco, and with the current Farrell Estates project, is that there is a lack of communication between the, between City Hall and the neighborhood associations. In addition, there are a few city staff employees who themselves have not made a financial commitment to live in White Plains, who continue to tell neighborhood residents who have made long-term commitments and investments to live here, what is best for us, while at the same time, some of these same bureaucrats do not even fully understand the character of the neighborhoods that we live in.
Mr. Rhodes, you need to wrap up.
Yeah?
That was the five minutes, so you need to wrap up.
Again, I, I would wrap it up by saying, don't tinker around with the residential areas.
Anthony Furenza.
I assume that was my timer, so I'll start quickly. So I want to say, everyone on the council, thank you for listening to me speak. I feel honored to be in front of my entire community. We have a packed building at City Hall. We should all feel very special that everybody cares so much about the community. And the one thing I want to get to before I go off on what I wrote down, I want to be a little personal off the cuff. Personally, I'm disappointed in a couple of things. I might hold myself a little bit more responsible. Maybe I should have been involved in this process a little sooner. Had I known, I certainly would have. I know it's been three years in the works. Three years ago, I had taken my father to the hospital with COVID, and he was home with an oxygen tank for the next two months. We have a single, he has a, a family business that I had to continue running, left my job to do so. Three years ago was a different world. So I just want to, we had some really impressive quotes, and I want to stay on track here. So I want to start off with a Mark Twain quote, because I think Chris Gomez did great, and I think that the main problem here is that people need to compromise, and you guys are doing a great job. So as long as everyone gets heard, I don't think there's going to be any problems, because what we're here to do is work together. So the quote I want to touch on is Mark Twain, just like this gentleman before me. My Mark Twain quote is, "History does not repeat itself, but it often rhymes." So there's a few times in history where, you know, there's another guy named Ronald Reagan who said, "I have the nine scariest words that you'll ever hear. I'm from the government, and I'm here to help." There's another quote. Before I quote him, I want to talk about the planning board meeting, where they said, essentially, in the documents, they want to avoid the use of character, because character could be a little touchy, and people can take it the wrong way. This is actually one of my favorite American speeches in all time, and I'll quote it right now. It starts with four words, but after those four words, it's, "That my four children will one day live in a nation where they are not judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. I have a dream," were the first four words. So character has nothing to do with race, or injustice, or inequality. Character is something completely different. I don't think we need to change the definitions of the words that we use in the plan. Going forward, this was, I was told this is the most highly-publicized program in White Plains history that occurred by John Iores. I think COVID was a little bit more publicized than this. Also, I think I have a few people, I've gone around with a petition that I'd like to submit for public record, and I started getting it signed in the rain. It's actually, it looks like I was on Castaway, because this FedEx envelope is completely soaked, and my notes are on it here. So, yeah, I've gotten almost 100 signatures in two days of people that have never heard of the plan, and the only petition, the thing that we're asking for, it's three requests, but the main request is just that this doesn't get rushed, and there's more public hearing, because there's a lot of us that feel like our opinions hadn't been heard. And to stay on track here, I want to say that the developer from New York City, who primarily builds in the Bronx, he builds 60% Section 8 or affordable housing. On top of that, he's already begun buying residential buildings. That's why you guys heard about Rosedale, it's because of me. I brought it to the attention of the board, and I, they actually said, "Are you talking about 1200 from Mariner Avenue?" Well, yes, not just that, but also the houses behind it, adding up to over five acres, which a developer has already bought, and he, his son posted on social media, new dig site at the backyards and at the houses that they are apparently planning to demolish. So that's a little alarming, and that's real. You know, extensive research, I want to know, I think we all deserve to know what studies, we were involved in the research, apparently. So, you know, if there were NGOs involved, I'm part of an NGO, by the way, and what university studies were involved, I think that we can always add the amount of research, and we're not asking to stop anything, certainly I'm not, and I'm not against anybody. If anybody wants to benefit the city, I love the idea of benefiting the city and working with you guys, and if anyone disagrees with me, I'd like to come to a compromise, because I can't have everything I want, people can't have everything that they want, this is America. Someone did buy this land, they could do things with them. I didn't buy it, but I think that we, as a residential association or residential community, we deserve to be involved in the process of knowing what's going on, and it's a, it seems a little bit nefarious, you know, that that happened the way it did. I don't want to ramble, and I really want to say thank you to Mayor Roach, Councilman Brash, who might be our next mayor, but, you know, I, I'm very fond of you, and I actually, I don't want to be naive, because a lot of people might say I am, but you are the people that we even trusted with our elected government. We turn to you, and I'm just saying that, please, hear our voices. We're not being radical. I spoke to a couple people, I disagreed with them. One of them was, I'll be quick and finish. Someone might have been intentional, spat in my face, and told me to get out of their face. When did this all happen? When did we become so divisive? I don't have anything against anyone in this city. I come from a diverse neighborhood. I was born in Mount Vernon and grew up there, and then lived in Harrison and White Plains, and from all over Westchester, I've traveled around the world. I don't see why we have to be so nasty with each other. To everyone in the room, I think we should just be more conducive, understand each other's concerns, and at the end of the day, I have faith that we will build a better, stronger community, a stronger White Plains, and a White Plains that we're all proud of 20 years from now when we look back at this. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And I have, can I submit this petition, please?
Mike Sanchez.
Before we begin, I'd just like to submit a letter that I wrote, well, I should not say Bob, kind of the Highlands Association wrote on behalf of the neighborhood of, Council Neighborhood Associations, to our council president, Ms. Presser. Everyone here received it. So let me start off by just thanking the mayor, the common council, Commissioner Gomez, I thought you did a great explanation of some of the things that we wrote about to our letter to the council presidents and, and everybody involved. So for those of you that don't know me, I am a lifelong resident in White Plains. I know everybody up here, the common council and the mayor, we work together on many different things. I also would like to say that everybody here has been very responsive to our concerns. I've spoken to every one of you except for one, who are playing phone tag, but I know that over the next week or so, we will get together. So for those of you that don't know me, I'm a lifelong resident. I grew up in Gedney Farms and currently live in the Rosedale neighborhood with my wife and two young kids. I am currently a history teacher in the White Plains City School District, as well as the president of the Rosedale Residential Association, RRA for short, and the White Plains Council of Neighborhood Associations, which is the WPCNA. I am also an Iraq War veteran who served in Iraq as a theater-level intelligence officer from 2009 to 2010. First off, thank you to everyone who has participated in, to help create our updated comprehensive plan. We appreciate the civilians and appointed members who have participated, and all of the hard work and thoughtful planning that has gone into this process. The comprehensive plan is a long and detailed document, and now that we have access to it, it is imperative that we analyze each idea and suggestion. We are all in the process of figuring out how this document is going to impact our city, and most importantly, many of the residents and their neighborhoods. Public feedback is a part of this process, and an important part of our democratic institution, so I don't want anyone to take this criticism personally or get overly defensive. Over the past few weeks, as we've analyzed these documents, I think that there has been more confusion than misinformation. I don't think that people have been talking about this to mislead others intentionally. I think that some of the wording was a little bit confusing, and people perceive these words how, based on what they know, and based on their experiences. So again, you know, I don't think that this was a purposeful misinformation campaign. Over the past several weeks, I've been meeting with, with engaged residents in the RRA, as well as, as well as other neighborhood associations, many of which that are just not on the South End, as a matter of fact, in the letter that was written to our council president, 11 other, 11 associations signed onto that letter. Our residents in the RRA and Saxon Woods are extremely concerned about what is going to happen with the old Taborzi Builders, vacant bank, and Chase Bank property, which collectively adds up to almost seven acres. Though there has been no plans that have been proposed, we are aware that these properties are being bought by the Stag Group, and it is Mr. Stag's intention to move his headquarters to the property. The residents understand that the land will likely be developed, like Anthony said, he owns the property, but in general, our residents are not necessarily against commercial developments along Mariner Avenue, but they are devoutly against multifamily attached housing that would change the character and impact the safety of the neighborhood. The RRA has similar concerns that the same suggested zoning changes will impact the old Wynwood property at 13 Wynwood Avenue, and I think Mr. Gomez did a great job of talking to those concerns. Again, it doesn't necessarily change while we're here, and I'll get to that by the end of, of this. So with that being said, I'm going to change things up, because Mr. Gomez did go through many of the White Plains Live initiatives that we were concerned about, that is the Live White Plains 1, 6, 12, 13, 14, and 16, and he hit very well on all of those, so I'm not going to go through again what he just explained. Throughout, or rather, though we recognize that all of the sections of the plan are suggestions, and we recognize that nothing is written in stone, and these are suggestions, we are here to tell you that we're not necessarily happy with some of those suggestions, and we would not like you to vote in favor of those suggestions if they did come up for a vote, whether they are in the old plan or the new plan. It cannot be emphasized enough that our city is a delicate balance of a vibrant downtown and our beautiful, single-family home neighborhoods. This elegant balance is part of what makes White Plains such a unique and special place to live. Our residents chose their homes in neighborhoods because they are single-family homes. They have worked their entire adult lives to live in their single-family home and single-family home neighborhood, and it is likely their greatest monetary investment besides their children, if they have one. If they wanted to live in cluster housing or in multifamily homes, they would have moved there, and, and into those types of neighborhood, or had moved downtown, okay? That's five minutes? Okay. So, excuse me?
You got some five minutes, you gotta, but you gotta, you gotta wrap. No, no, folks, please, this is, we're not-
That was five minutes? Okay. So in short, I'll wrap it up, not a problem, okay? So in short, to be clear, the White Plains, the WPCNA represents, representatives support an increase in affordable housing, as we have always done. The RRA and the WPCA would like to work collaboratively with the city. One, to ensure that affordable housing is built in a manner that maintains the distinctive character and balance, balance of our city, to ensure transparency when it comes to development in and around our neighborhoods. And lastly, we expect that any developer that has purchased these properties and intend to develop them meet with the impacted neighborhoods before any votes are taken on zoning law changes or approval of the development. Meeting with the neighborhood should be at the beginning of the process, and not at the end, when decisions have already been made.
Oh, folks, folks, folks. First of all, first of all, we don't do that, but I will say, who doesn't agree with that? But that's the developer, not, not us.
Right. So thank you in advance for your attention to this matter. We look forward to meeting with you individually and in small groups that abide by the open meeting laws to further discuss our opposition to these suggestions, and that will keep our, our, our neighborhoods safe and the character of the neighborhoods the way that they are. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Mike. So we're going to take a, we're going to take a very brief recess for, to allow people that have, but if, yeah. If you're not, I don't know how to put this, but otherwise, stay tight here, because we really want it to be quick, we got a lot of people waiting to speak. Okay, folks, we're going back in session. If you're gonna, if you're leaving, go. If you're staying, please quiet down so we can get started again.
Larry Timinia.
He already spoke with them.
I don't know, maybe-
Okay, next.
Jane Blumer.
She just, the early one, too.
Okay, next.
Martin Goyenix.
Oh, there's Jane Blumer. All right, you'll be next, Ms. Blumer, just have a seat. Have a seat, you'll be next.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you. My name is Martin Goyenix, living at 58 Rosedale in beautiful area in down south White Plains. My house apparently is the epicenter of what's happening in the area with all the land purchase and development rumors. I'm here tonight to speak in opposition to specific sections of the White Plains comprehensive plan, specifically- Plan, specifically 13 and 14 and III. Commissioner Gomez stole some of my thunder with his excellent application of technology to show everybody what the pictures looked at, but I'll just open with that I understand that the comprehensive, White Plains I is a guide and not a closing, closing, oh, very sorry, a binding document, but I still feel that it is a vehicle for easier change to any new rules that might be applied. Anyone who read the text of White Plains 13 will recognize that it was a continuation of previous recommendations that existed in the old comprehensive plan. It brought linear, linear focus to the adoption of more special charter clustering techniques and regulations and a wider definition of where such a conservation development can be built. Case in point, Ridgeway and the Farrelly Estates. Live 14 is just an attempt to lower the acreage threshold for these developments down to five acres. Conservation development has been around since 1980, as Commissioner Gomez said, maybe I read his same books. And the only major difference between the 10-acre and the smaller property is that the larger property was allowed to have attached single-family dwellings. Now, the definition of single-family dwellings could be tandem, it could be triplex, it could be a townhouse, anything below the threshold of 50 units for multifamily dwellings. This has to, this dropped into our smaller area that is and has been traditionally, single-family attached housing would ruin the essence, not, the essence of our, essence of our neighborhood, public, because it will increase traffic density, public school issues, public safety access, stress on the public transit systems, which is only one bus line down there, and put a strain on water, sewage, electricity and natural gas infrastructures already burdened by years of incremental additions and aging of the facilities. If conservation development is in a five-acre parcel will allow attached single-family dwellings, how can you even realize the environmental benefits of a conservation development that requires linear open space, protect environment features and requires larger buffers to the existing single-family areas? If we choose to allow senior housing, in case in point, instead of the conservation development, we still must contend with a different version of the above concerns. The developer's profit motive in this is not aligned with our communities' interests. In closing, change is inevitable. Let's go to this page. Change is inevitable, is all change good? A solution to problems that have been growing for the last 30 years should not be treated as a sprint but as a marathon. Let us take the time and the effort with the community, with more community involvement to the White Plains, the one White Plains community plan, to take the six legs of the plan, tie them together properly, connect, green, live, play, strengthen and worth. Thank you for your time.
Jane Blumer?
I appreciate the opportunity to comment about the White Plains I plan, Comprehensive Plan. I raise questions about comprehensivity here. I think it's, there's a lot of talk about the White Plains offering a place for, for your home, for your whatever home, however you want to, how many acres you want or how many feet or how many square feet and so on. But I think that the city of White Plains is larger than that. The city of White Plains is a part of Westchester County, it's part of a region, the metropolitan region, and it's a part of the state of New York. I don't hear any mention about industry. There was some reference to jobs. I'm grateful that a young man, Mark, brought up jobs and other, I think people brought up about unions. But what kind of industry does this country want? What kind of businesses do we want? Do we all, is everybody, what percentage of White Plains residents are renters, renting, I think, huge amounts of money? I'm just curious. That would be a question for the comprehensive planner. And if they're paying $3,000 to $5,000 a month, well, that's fine, but maybe they're making a lot of money in the financial sector. Is New York City only a financial sector? Is it only a city for Wall Street? What about the, what about people in union jobs? So I raised that question. I also did not hear a word about White Plains Hospital, which seems to be one of the most large, largest, fastest-growing industries in the city. I didn't hear any reference to the Bronx River. Now, the Bronx River is a sleepy little place until we have floods. What about the flooding in, that many people encounter going home by way of the Bronx River? Even though we've had some environmental changes there, there are still problems there, as there are elsewhere in Elmsford and so on and so forth. So are we looking at our natural resources? Are we looking at how we use farming in the state of New York? How we use agriculture? How we use resources? One young person talked about batteries and the idea of energy does not just come from a lithium battery. Lithium comes from one or two very select places and I think Africa. So we'll steal all their lithium and then we'll have a lot of batteries. Are we looking at energy? Are we looking at the larger issues? This is not a comprehensive plan. This is about a place to come home to your happy little home, depending on how many feet of grass you have or how many trees you have or how many neighbors you have near you or far from you. But this, we, are we larger than that? Are we just about our happy little castle? Or are we about developing this country, about developing the industry, business, commerce? Commerce between states, between governments, between countries? Are we about building, so that is my question. It is not a comprehensive plan, I'm sorry to say. It's very pretty and there, I wish there were people here from newspaper, I wish there were journalists here interviewing people out in the hallway, going out to putting money in the meter. I mean, there is a lot of cynicism out there. So where are the journalists asking questions? So that more of us can be thinking. It's good as far as it went. Okay, so a planning and building on a plan is something that we build on, but that, those are my questions. Thank you so much and let's keep building together. Let's discover more of our resources.
Christina Santiago?
On any level, thank you.
Christina Santiago?
Hi, I'm Christina Santiago. I had written more, but I want to thank Mr. Sanchez because he covered so much of what I wanted to say so well, so for that part, I'll say ditto. And I want to just move to a personal piece for myself. I moved to White Plains 27 years ago into a home in a residential neighborhood zone for single-family houses. That is where I chose to live. You can't imagine the dismay I felt when I learned about a month ago that my entire block was quietly purchased by a developer who wants to convert this land purchased into a multi-family attached rental dwellings. My mind can't fathom the destruction of the land around me, the beautiful trees, the gardens, et cetera. And what about the wildlife in the area? What impact will all the deforestation and excavation have to all of them? How can we be expected to withstand all the demolition and construction havoc that's going to go on endlessly with this construction? I understand the developer will be allowed to build on the land that was purchased. However, I strongly request that the developer only be allowed to build single-family houses in our area that preserve the style and character of our lovely, quiet residential neighborhood. We have the right to live in residential neighborhoods of our choice. My other request is that care, that great care and consideration be employed during any construction. My neighbors and I are deeply concerned about the impact of the deforestation, the removal of the ledge rock with, will have on our homes since ledge rock runs under our foundations. We are also very concerned about the intrusion and disruption of daily life in our neighborhoods. We live on very narrow streets and there's a lot of traffic already going through there during rush hour and during the day, during the evening and the morning. We are asking that our single-family neighborhood remain a single-family neighborhood. Please listen to us and strongly consider our needs and requests. Thank you.
Sheila O'Brien?
Okay, can you hear me? Great. Sheila O'Brien, I live on North Street. I'd like to discuss the way in which the comprehensive plan process has been run and how it has left many of us feeling. If you review the many New York State Comprehensive Plan guidelines, as I have, it is noted, key to these update efforts is that they are inclusive and be based upon solid data collection and analysis. Most of you know my career and expertise has been in the data analytics and market research space, and this process does not remotely feel thorough, comprehensive, quantitative or data-driven. Or does it feel inclusive as the very neighborhood associations that push to get an updated plan were excluded from the process and committees? Instead, some random guy from, I think Fisher Hill, was part of the committee. But please, tell me what he knows about the other 27 neighborhoods. Answer, he knows zero, just as I know zero about Fisher Hill or the other neighborhoods I do not live in. What a tremendous missed opportunity and gap in the process. You completely failed to engage the subject matter experts or SMEs, that is, the unique 30 neighborhood associations, and held out one guy, no one knows, to be the voice and represent the neighborhoods? Why? Tell me how we are not supposed to feel like this is all being shoved down our throats. After watching the last planning board meeting, I'm in even more troubled. Oliver and I oris already have plans to install high-density projects for the North Street Corridor and speak about it as if it's a done deal. And they made it clear that the target for multifamily and ADUs is the single-family home zones. Tell me where all multifamily and ADU cars will park? Are my neighbors going to be renting out their basements and paving over their front lawns for tenants' parking spots? How do you plan on funding additional police and fire when the city cannot even maintain adequate coverage now? The board is also operating under false market data assumptions. According to the experts, Pew and Harris, a third of 18 to the 34-year-olds and 45% of 18 to 29-year-olds live at home, reaching the Great Depression's levels, with the number one reason being affordability and to save money. And attitudes about this behavior have shifted. It used to be from failure, you're a failure, to hey, you're being smart about saving your money. Completely opposite of what our planning board cited. Go watch the video. If our board had any understanding of market research data, it might enable the foresight to single, to consider single-family starter homes in our zones or downtown condos with two, three bedrooms, zoom rooms, rather than more high-density, high-rent units. And have you considered all the rental vacancies across White Plains and the surrounding area? People, corporations and industry are leaving New York in droves. Our building and planning departments are woefully understaffed. Who is going to manage this frenzy when you open up the floodgates? The developers will run the show and threaten to sue the city if we do not let them do what they want to do. In Berarson versus Newcastle, the court's ruling recognized the right of a municipality to set up various types of used zones, with no requirement that each must contain some sort of housing balance. The court stated that its concern was not whether each zone was a balanced entity, but instead whether the municipality itself was to be a balanced and integrated community. I would say that up to now, White Plains, despite many development failures, Galleria, City Center, is one of a few, one of the few cities that is a balanced and integrated community, and that's due to our unique neighborhoods. This ill-conceived and rushed plan now threatens that balance as our incompetent federal and state governments made you drink the Kool-Aid. You took their agenda and reverse engineered the plan to support them and not us. By law, it is the plan that will enable and dictate the zoning changes. Remember, the buck stops here with you. You are not mandated to push high density into the single-family neighborhoods, and if you pursue this scheme, you will have burned White Plains with another large-scale development failure, failure that breaks the camel's back and sets off a mass exodus of middle class from White Plains as you systematically destroy our generational wealth we all worked hard to achieve. You need to push the pause button and do this properly, including all the neighborhoods. This is the pig in the parlor and not the barnyard. The right thing in the wrong place. Sorry.
Apartment buildings and neighborhoods, no, you're fighting with the shadow. Okay, next.
Judy Lee?
I'm Judy Lee, for a couple of people who know me. I've lived on Oxford Road in White Plains for 30 years, but I've been a resident of a lot of neighborhoods in White Plains for a total of 53 years. So I've been around North White Plains, downtown and other places. I serve as a board member for the Gedney Farms Neighborhood Association, but I'm speaking this evening for myself and my family and I'm only going to talk for about two minutes. First, I want to say that I do appreciate the amount of effort that went into the work of the Comprehensive Plan Committee, the members of the planning department, the planning board that is now taking this comprehensive draft up and making their recommendations, and a specific shout-out to Ms. Oliva, Oliver, Lynn Oliver, for her very thorough questioning of what's gone into the plan so far. Commissioner Gomez has really done a tremendous amount of work and the residents of White Plains who were able to participate in public sessions for this draft that's taken now two and a half years. I realize that it's not an easy task to corral the thoughts and motivations and comments of a very diverse group of people who participated on that Comprehensive Plan Committee or those people who did participate in the few public sessions that were out there. It's also not easy to ensure that the results reflect, protect or serve the changing needs of the people who live here. There are many great ideas in this draft document, without a doubt. I love a lot of them. I'm not going to go into them. There are a few that are not so great and I'm not going to go into them either because my colleagues back here have done an excellent job of doing that so far. I understand that the, that the plan is a guideline for you as members- I understand that the plan is a guideline for you as members of the Common Council and for our government staffs, who will need to implement future plans on a final, but dynamic and living document as it's being presented. My only critique relates to communication. As much as the city's consultants and staff work hard to get feedback from the residents of our city, many residents, as you've heard here tonight, have said on camera and off that they either did not know that the Comprehensive Plan was in the works, or that the Comprehensive Plan Committee existed, and that the consultants who worked with the city were looking for feedback from residents. It can happen. There are 59,000 of us. I know we only sleep here, as Commissioner Gomez said in one of the meetings, but you know what? We sleep here, we eat here, we play here, we live here, okay? We do all of those things. We want you to understand that these public hearings are a great opportunity to speak up, if a crowded room in City Hall is your thing. It's not mine. I don't like to sit here in a hot hallway, or in a hot room, or in a space where I'm waiting until 9:30 to say very little. I would suggest that you, as the council members, John, everyone else, Tom, that you reach out directly to the impacted residents as your thoughts and plans move forward and you start to consider the ideas around zoning changes. If you go to those neighborhoods, we don't bite. We really don't, do we?
Only Sheila bites.
Well, she has a pretty good bite, but my guess is she's got a great bark, but maybe she doesn't really bite so much. I don't know. But in any case, the point is that we don't bite. We do want to talk to you. We want to understand the logic behind any considerations you might give to any of the ideas that Michael and others put forward earlier today. Thank you.
Hi, Mayor Roach and the Common Council. My name is Ellen Berger, and I've lived for almost 50 years at 427 Ridgeway in White Plains. Our family went to the White Plains schools, and we've enjoyed this community tremendously. We have a great opportunity right now in White Plains because of the revision of the Comprehensive Plan, as Commissioner Gomez had stated, to bring forward our aspirations, dreams, and vision for our city. White Plains is the county seat of Westchester. It has a prime location, which makes it accessible to Manhattan, the tri-state area, and beyond. It is a wonderful community of tremendous diversity and talent, and has a school system which is nurturing, challenging, and enriching. In reviewing the Comprehensive Plan, what can we add that will draw thousands of visitors and tourists to our city and offer an enriching experience for our community? There's a group forming in the city that has the vision of building a world-class museum located in the heart of White Plains. This would make White Plains a destination city. It would greatly enhance revenue, attract new businesses, bring jobs, as well as bring excitement to our city by engaging the community. And one example that I brought up before is this little town of Beacon, New York. It's in upstate New York. Maybe people never even heard of it, or would never even think of visiting it, but in 2003, they built DIA, which is an exhibition space for contemporary art. And historically, they averaged 70,000 visitors a year to Beacon, New York, 95% of whom came from outside of the city. We envision a museum which would create a space where history and art come alive, blending the past and the present through cutting-edge technology and immersive experiences. The vision is to create a world-class museum that transcends traditional boundaries, offering a dynamic space where history, art, and innovative technology converge to inspire, educate, and connect generations. The museum could include event space to use for town halls, educational experiences, films, lectures, and create a destination just for local families. We advocate that this vision be advocated to the Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
Mary Ann Riley.
I spoke before, I spoke less at the beginning.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Common Council. My name is Michael Mataris, 6 Colonial Road. I'm the president of the Old Oak Ridge Neighborhood Association. Old Oak Ridge is a single-family neighborhood surrounded by office parks, religious institutions, and the high school. We are deeply concerned, as are other single-family home neighborhoods, about the language and recommendations of the Live White Plains section of the Comprehensive Plan. The content of this section, if adopted, will alter the character and the integrity of the single-family home neighborhoods which are on the south end of White Plains. We've seen what developers will do if given the opportunity. The requested zoning change at 701-733 Westchester Avenue Office Building Complex Campus several years ago approved would open up the floodgates to apartment house developments in the south end. We thank the city government for agreeing with us in the 701 rezoning. We hope the city government continues to recognize single-family neighborhoods should remain as such and are the backbone of the city. However, is this what we should expect once the Comprehensive Plan is adopted as in its present form? If you allow the current live recommendations, Live White Plains recommendations be approved, it will allow the transformation of single-family neighborhoods to multiple dwelling family neighborhoods. This will alter the fabric of White Plains, which always included a downtown, multiple-dwelling buildings, homes, and single-family neighborhoods. Permitting cluster housing, housing on small parcels of land, encouraging the building of alternate dwelling units, and apartment house placements in single-family neighborhoods attacks the concept of a diverse environment that White Plains wants to nurture. What's the goal of these ideas? More urbanization, more density all over the city? Don't we have a downtown which is undergoing a renaissance of building which creates a richer urban environment for those who choose to live there? Why must this be extended to all the neighborhoods of White Plains? If residents of single-family homes wanted to live in a more urban environment, their neighborhoods in White Plains would fill the need. But there are those who live in single-family homes areas have chosen to live there and would like to keep the environment the same. We are joining with our friends and neighbors from all over White Plains and asking the mayor and the common council to reassess the proposed changes encompassed in the Live White Plains section of the plan, and don't allow the current recommendations to be adopted. Thank you. Good night, and thank you for your patience.
Good evening, Mayor Roach and Common Council. I'm Salvatore Galliano. I've been living here for 22 years. We moved up from Manhattan when my daughter was just recently born, and she attended George Washington Grammar School, which I believe your daughter also attended, Mayor?
Two boys.
Two boys? Oh, two boys, okay. So she would say, yeah, Mayor Roach's kids are here. Anyway, so she is now 22 years old. I assume your boys are closer to that? Maybe a little younger?
Older.
Older?
On both sides.
Oh, on both sides. Okay.
That's the end of the question.
All right, no, that's it. That's it. Oh, that's it. But, you know, and it's been great. The last 22 years have been fantastic. But the thing is, I've noticed, all of these skyscrapers going up, we don't even know what the impact of those are going to be yet on this city. And then, I live in a single-family home near Gedney Way on Pleasant Avenue, and I know you probably lived near George Washington, yeah, because I used to see you walking home from dropping your children off back in the day when we were both doing that. All I want to say is, you don't know the impact of those skyscrapers yet because people are not living in them. The single-family homes are great. We have a great library here. Be careful how much you want to expand. I came up on that right after 9/11, that surge of people that came, and I guess you were part of that? I don't know. Because, sorry, you probably came after me, I'm not sure. Anyway, but just be careful about that because there is a Smart Cities Initiative that is coming down from the UN that's kind of pushing a lot of people to do this. The mayor of New York City and the governor have expressed, oh, yeah, bring these people in, all these migrants coming in, millions of them from the southern border. And then recently, they said, no, no, stop, stop, because there's way too many of them. So we have to be careful about what we do because these people, there is, New York City, I've seen it turn. It's not turned for the best, it's turned for the worst, and we don't want to see that coming up here to White Plains. That's all. Thank you.
Hi, I appreciate the opportunity to speak about my concern regarding the new Comprehensive Plan and the ensuing development. There is much evidence that the same policies are being implemented in countless other U.S. cities. In fact, two Massachusetts cities, Milton and Rentham, have recently voted down similar zoning changes that White Plains is proposing. So instead of a grassroots plan unique to White Plains, the Comprehensive Plans, the evidence points to a worldwide movement with Comprehensive Plans using the same language in every major city under the guise of public-private partnerships, which means there's no accountability. So this global agenda is implementing the same changes in financial, transportation, education, housing, et cetera, systems. These agendas are disconcerting and do not represent the voice of citizens and residents. And I would like to share material with documented evidence compiled by a local group of researchers. Thank you, you know, lots of time for, you know, receiving that, but for the constituents, for the citizens, if anybody's interested. Thank you.
Greetings, Mr. Mayor and Common Council members. My name is Mark Lerner, 36 Oakwood Avenue in White Plains. Been a resident here for 24 years. I am here to make some points on behalf of the Coalition for Addition Without Subtraction, otherwise known as CAWS, as well as the Martin Luther King Institute for Nonviolence and the Ad Hoc Alice Committee Partnership. The Galleria Mall site is addressed on pages 169 to 172, 207 to 208, 233, and 303 of the draft Comprehensive Plan. First, I would like to ask that the plan more specifically detail how the city's newly- obtained $10 million downtown revitalization grant will interplay with the redevelopment of the Galleria site. One of the problems with gigantic commercially-operated rental projects is that landlords capture the value of public investments in infrastructure and beautification by raising rents. In this regard, it is important that the use of the grant truly benefit the public. If the grant is used in ways that improve the value of developers' investment, the developer should provide public benefit in exchange for that. There is a risk that the grant will be used simply in ways that increase the value of the developer's investment and increased rents charged. That's why it is so important that the project include a robust amount of affordable housing that is available to households at or below 50% of area median income. One way developers have avoided actually producing affordable units is by the buying out of their obligation to do so by paying fees in lieu of affordable housing. Today, consistent with the recommendations by the Westchester County Planning Board, I ask that the city stop permitting developers to buy out of their obligation to include affordable units. Instead, they should include affordable units at least to the extent of the full percentage-based requirements of the White Plains Affordable Housing Regulations. Second, I would like to address the proposed transfer of the Galleria site's public parking garages. Transferring the public ownership interests can be thought of as a public investment in the development. Here, too, there is a risk that the public investment will simply serve to generate private profits. Here, too, it is very important that the public receive value in exchange for its transfer of the public parking garages. I feel the best way to vindicate the public's contribution of the city-owned parking garage is to insist that any structures built on the parking garage land include 100% of units as designated affordable units. Finally, it is important that the adoption of the new Comprehensive Plan be accompanied by a robust environmental review. I suggest that the adoption of the new plan should be accompanied by a positive declaration consistent with the state compilation of regulations, Title VI, Section 617.4. Thank you for your time. I have some copies, if anyone in the...
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council members. My name is Lisa Piper Gilbert, and I live at 108 Longview Avenue in White Plains. My husband and I have lived in White Plains for over 25 years, and we've raised our four children here, all enjoying things that White Plains has to offer. In addition to being a concerned citizen, I'm a licensed architect, and I focus on residential renovations and additions with many projects in White Plains. I help people live better. I help make functional and aesthetic improvements to existing homes so they can better serve their owners' needs while being sensitive to individual properties and greater neighborhoods. I'm here tonight to speak about design. In a famous quote, Sir Winston Churchill said, "We shape our buildings thereafter they shape us." This statement acknowledges what we know to be true, that the design of our buildings, and on a larger scale, our cities, has a profound impact on our behavior, attitudes, and our general well-being, highlighting the interconnected relationship between human beings and our built environment. I have read through some of the One White Plains Comprehensive Plan, primarily the Live White Plains section. It's an incredibly impressive document, and I think most of us would agree on the general broad goals. However, my concern is about design regulations and oversight. How will these new initiatives, policies, and regulations be put into place? How will we ensure adequate and appropriate oversight? What checks and balances need to be enacted so the execution of the initiatives is tested against stated goals before they are approved? Vision is one thing, execution is another. Design is critical. I understand that growth is inevitable, but we need to do the work to make sure that growth is done sensitively and within an appropriate design framework. In our city set up to successfully meet the One White Plains goals, are we qualitatively looking at all the scales from an architectural and a design point of view? Do we have unmet needs? Do we have all the right boards in place, commissions, task forces? Are the right people in the right roles? We can research and learn from any other cities. Perhaps we might need an ARB, an Architectural Review Board. Maybe we need something like an Urban Design and Architectural Advisory Panel, or task forces to be put in place to address specific architectural and planning working committees to create design manuals. For example, New York City could be a guide, as they have a Department of Design and Construction that includes an Office of Chief Architect and a Design and Construction Guidelines section... that includes an Office of Chief Architect and a Design and Construction Guidelines section. Future decisions and approvals need to consider the architectural design at all scales. We need to study the unique character and features of our existing city and our diverse neighborhoods and approve plans that not only comply with legal regulations, but also some set of design guidelines that will preserve and protect the critical relationship between human beings and our built environment. I'd be happy to discuss these things further, and I'd happily help advance architectural design initiatives as we grow and evolve. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Robert Marich. I live in Stanis Lane in White Plains. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I have three points. Many of the prior speakers were waxed enthusiastic about affordable housing. Well, to me, that seems like an exercise in futility. This is an expensive area. I mean, how is that going to work? And when government gets involved, it just always seems to be rife with corruption and wastefulness. I'll point out, I think we all read about a month ago that 70 employees from the New York City Housing Authority, NICA, were indicted or arrested for bribery and extortion. That's low-cost housing. With the migrant influx, apparently the government's plan is to put up people in $300 a night hotels. That's not very comforting to know that's low-cost housing. So, yeah, we should, you know, work on affordability on the edges, but full-blown programs turn out to be boondoggles. However, I come here with a solution. I notice many of the advocates of this seem to be very well-dressed. They can invest their own savings, do any kind of affordable housing, lose a lot of money, and at least the government won't lose my money. So that's number one. Number two, it seems to me the panel should have worked a lot harder to bring in more voices locally to the planning process, including voices that would not necessarily be agreeable. We don't want, you know, out-of-control people, but you would learn more. And this Comprehensive Plan would be much better. It shouldn't be left to hand-pick friendlies. Finally and last, and this is my main point, from what I could see, we could call this proposal, "Let's Make White Plains Like Yonkers and Newburgh." I mean, is that your goal? I, that's all I can figure out. And this is a beef. This is the Comprehensive Plan. It's a real bland name. It doesn't communicate much, and you really ought to present it honestly to people. I'm trying to be honest with you. You know, to me, it's like, "Goodbye, pleasant suburb, hello, urbanization." That's what you're selling. And unfortunately, and I'm about to wrap up, this reminds me of the French-American school battle. I was involved in that. I took the time to read two of the drafts, and it was useful, and changes were made. I know the applicant there, the French-American school, always trumpeted, you know, we were responsive. But, you know, after a while of looking at that, I got the feeling, there's a draft that I'm not reading. It's the final draft, it's the real plan. And what we get is a lot of, you know, head fakes here in the middle. And I ask you to be honest, you know, if you're going to make the whole town an urbanization concrete place, tell us, be upfront. That's what we really need. Just be honest, and the French-American school exercise was not particularly comforting in that. Anyway, I thank you for your time and your patience, and thank you for listening to me.
For a second, I didn't think I would make it. It's an honor to speak to the council tonight. My name is Justin LaGarcia. I reside at 75 Lincoln Avenue in the Battle Hill section of White Plains. I came here to speak on behalf of the Coalition of Addition Without Subtraction. I was born and raised in Brooklyn, New York, would have been a resident of White Plains for almost seven years. I'm raising my son here. I felt compelled to speak today because the massive development that is taking place in White Plains in many ways resembles what I saw in my hometown. It feels like I'm re-watching a movie that I've seen before. During the 2000s, developers were given carte blanche in Brooklyn, in massive luxury apartment building after massive luxury apartment building went up, without regard for existing communities, affordability, or infrastructure. This aggressive gentrification uprooted families who have lived in neighborhoods for generations and eventually displaced entire communities. Much of Brooklyn now is an unaffordable place to live except for the very privileged. So I stand here today to speak out against this type of aggressive development, so that White Plains invest in a future that benefits the many and not just the few, so that White Plains remains an inclusive city, and so we develop and don't destroy our communities. I have personally seen the inside of homes in our city where large numbers of low-income residents and immigrants live in substandard conditions. It's shocking. Basements without windows, poor ventilation, leaks and illegal subdivisions that are reminiscent of things I've seen in the developing world. This is in part due to a crisis of affordability along with other issues. But as it pertains to affordability, we ask that White Plains set aside more affordable housing that is truly affordable, thinking about the Galleria project, so that middle-class people who are in need of a home can find one. This means units that primarily target households at the 50% and 60% area median income levels. The Galleria redevelopment should include significant open green space that is not just open to the public, but is actually owned, controlled, and operated by the City Department of Recreation and Parks. This means more trees and park space where people can de-stress and socialize. There's generally a lack of green space, at least it feels that way. If we are going to rapidly develop this city, in the case of the Galleria adding 3,200 apartments on top of the many thousands more units that are going up all around the city, if we're adding that to the heart of Downhoun, developers should set aside money for police, firefighters, and infrastructure. There should be studies completed that measure the impact on traffic and air quality. Heard we spoke about that tonight. And lastly, we should accomplish this in a truly transparent process. I appreciate that you're hearing us tonight, which allows for diverse perspectives and explores best available options. I thank the council for giving me the opportunity to provide input on this important issue and for listening to the community before committing to any plans for development. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ariel Jamil, and I thank you for this opportunity to speak. My family has lived on Saxon Woods Road for over 60 years. My property sits adjacent to Saxon Woods Park. We are very much in the woods. We are part of the Rosedale community, and as a border house, we pay both White Plains and Scarsdale taxes. It's a lot of taxes. I could literally send somebody to Harvard almost every year. My parents, who are now 88 and 91, they have seen what was once a few scattered homes on an old farmland turn into a quiet residential, single-family zone neighborhood around them, and have been very happy in the quiet woods until a commercial developer purchased the property adjacent to us and built the Ambassador Senior Living Buildings. So we have a very unique experience with commercial versus residential.
I just want to say that it's in Scarsdale.
I know, Ambassador's...
They wouldn't even, they wouldn't even let us participate or comment.
No, no, I realize that. No, we understand exactly what happened. The entire neighborhood, both White Plains and Scarsdale residents, fought this commercial venture, I'm just giving this as an example, for over 10 years because they were worried about traffic. Saxon Woods, of course, as you know, is extremely narrow, and Mamaroneck Avenue has a lot of traffic already, but they were more concerned with noise pollution, like ambulance and sirens and the like. So after a long decade court battle, the developer pulled a final hail mary, and he was able to alter the zoning, and he blasted through rock and built in Scarsdale. Traffic, yes. Noise, you bet. Today, we no longer call them to fix their roof equipment, their high-pitched piercing alarms, or broken fan belts, or from their rooftop vents and compressors. We just call the police, and we call them at least once a month. It's a commercial venture in what was a quiet, almost silent residential area filled with tons of deer, coyote, fox, rare birds, and a lot more. There's no denying that adding more commercial properties within our residentially-zoned properties will probably be more of the same. We have been told this developer has already purchased several properties on Rosedale Avenue and is currently making a play for the Chase Bank on the corner, as well as the furniture thing right to the other side of it, towards White Plains. This entire stag area, stag wants, is also a rock ledge, so the blasting will be extremely large, detrimental to the area, the people, and especially the wildlife. Several newspaper articles about this developer make him out to be a pretty shady character as well, similar to his quiet purchasing of those residential properties on Rosedale with plans to develop, and he has plans to develop. Furthermore, the 50-year storm flooding, which started coming every 10 years, now happens at least three times a year. After losing our bridge to our, one of these storms, our only entrance and egress to our home, we had a topographical survey done of the area. The engineers, the hydro engineer report relayed that due to the increase in development in White Plains, more concrete and less grass to absorb rainwater, the runoff now all floods down the west branch of the Mamaroneck River, which last season took out our neighbors' cars, garages, and even the entire first floor of the Ambassador Living Center. We, as a community and a neighborhood, prior to anything more being built in this area of such size, we really demand a full research on the ecological ramifications of this potential, particular potential development on Rosedale, as well as a very thorough look at who this developer is, his character, and his track record. Have any of you read these articles? I think there was one, the Riverdale Press, a whole bunch of them. All these articles about the sky stag and all the rules he breaks and all the laws he ignores, and all the complaints that are already against him. So, again, no one here is against housing for people who need it. I'm totally pro that, no matter who they are or where they're from. But amending residential zonings to accommodate stuff like this and on a residential street like Rosedale, which is pretty narrow as it is, that only has single-family homes, that's not what my elderly parents or anyone in this building have worked their entire lives to afford their homes in the quiet woods and probably do not want to endure again. Thank you for your time.
Melanie Colby?
She had to leave, and I'd like to say a few words about when she's a member of my board.
I think you spoke at...
I know, but you didn't announce, Mr. Mayor, that you couldn't come back.
Yes, I did. Yes, I did.
So if you don't mind, I'm...
No, I, no, we're going to hear, is there anyone? Are we done with the list?
Yeah, I'll go last.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak who has not previously spoken? Okay, Mr. Sheehan, I will be happy to chat with you, but I can't let one person speak twice when I told everyone else they can only speak once. It just doesn't work. But I'm happy to chat with you. You want to come in and sit down? I listened to everything you had to say.
I'm not going to speak.
Okay. Okay, well, there you go. Okay, that, if there's no, is there anyone else who wishes to be heard this evening who has not already spoken at this hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is closed. I want to let you know that for two weeks following the closure of the hearing, we will be accepting written comments, so people can feel free to do that, and that will be until March 18th. And I thank everyone for coming out this evening and for participating in this. With that, I want to, as we get ready to close the meeting, I feel I'm going to hand the microphone over to John Martin to comment on this Saturday.
Thank you, Mayor.
Or would you rather have me do it?
No, I, I'll say a couple of words because this will be the 25th White Plains-St. Patrick State Parade on Saturday. We're optimistic with the weather, and to that end, we have 20-some bands, I think 14 or 15 floats, and dozens and dozens of wonderful community groups coming out to march in the parade. So I'd love to see as many of our citizens come out and support the parade, especially on this, the 25th anniversary of the parade.
Okay, well, see you all there. And is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The meeting is adjourned.